Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. Council members, at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Dr. Alan McFallon from Calvary Evangelical Baptist Church? And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, good evening.
And I appreciate the privilege. Shall we pray? And Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege to pray. We thank you for this city honoring you by having prayer. And God, we know that you are sovereign. We know that you are in control of everything. And even the heart of the king, you said in the Bible, is in your hand. And you can turn the king any way you wish. And God, I pray even for this meeting tonight. They have an agenda. And we know that the Scripture is very clear that we are to plan. But we also are very clear from the Scriptures that you direct our plans. So we commit this meeting to you. And that whatever is said or done will be for your glory, your honor. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. McFallon, if you could, come back up. You know, this is a real privilege for me. I've been trying to get Dr. Mack here for six years. And not only is he a great leader and does great work within his church, but he is a national leader and is always on the road and always doing things for not only Portsmouth, but this entire country. Last year, or was it, I think it was year before last when you had your national conference here in Portsmouth and you had clergy from all over the world to come to Portsmouth. And then I think I was talking to your wife one day and she was talking about you were nationally recognized as 100 most important people in America or something. I don't want to say it wrong, but I am pleased that you're here and I want to give you a minute to at least tell us a little about Calvary Evangelical Baptist Church and the work that you're doing, sir. And again, it is my honor to have you here tonight.
Well, I hope the television cameras are on me.
Yeah, no, they're not here for that. This is all good news. They won't report this, trust me. Go ahead.
I am very honored to be here and I'm very thankful. I've invited the mayor to our church as even this past Sunday, we were privileged to have the chief of police there. And we're a church in the community. We've been here 52 years and we're just doing what God has called us to do. And I'm just honored to be here tonight with you. And I bid you guys speed. I'm not here to do a sermon. But you are a group of people and you are being watched from all over the world. And I look at you and I was just chatting with the folks. Sunday, our church kind of looked like you, a little diverse. And one of my assistant pastors had to preach for me because I was sick. And he just happened to be white. And it's what your shirts are saying. Virginia is for, and that's what I love to tell people, come to Virginia. Virginia is for lovers. And so that's what I promote. And I'm very proud to be a part of what you're doing tonight. And I bid you guys speed. I would love to stay, but my wife got what I had. I had a virus over the weekend and she took care of me. After 49 years, I need to run back home and take care of her. Good to see you, Doc.
All right. Thank you for coming, sir. And for those of you that don't know, Dr. McFallon is affectionately known as Dr. Mack and all of his members and throughout the community. So, Dr. Mack, thank you for coming. Okay, members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Six members of City Council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of March 22nd, 2016, and a regular meeting of March 22nd, 2016, and a call meeting of March 29th, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Very good.
The minutes are adopted, 6-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. City Managers' Report, 16-117. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $50,038 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY 2015-16 Grants Fund for Use by the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office for the Victim Witness Program. Vision Principle Sustainable Neighborhoods. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
Circle.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0. 16-118. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Marketing Leverage Program Grant in the Amount of $8,500 from Virginia Tourism Corporation and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY 2015-16 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Marketing, Communications, and Tourism to Conduct a Tourism Marketing Campaign. Vision Principles Innovation and Change, Sustainable Neighborhoods, and Efficient Service Delivery. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0. 16-119. Adoption of an Ordnance to Amend Section 10-113 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to Change the Name of the Voting Location for Precinct Number 30. Vision Principle Efficient Service Delivery. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
May for adoption, sir.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0. 16-120. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Shelter Plus Care Grant in the Amount of $476,856 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2015-16 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to Provide Rental Assistance to Certain Chronological Homeless Portsmouth Residents. Vision Principle Sustainable Neighborhoods and Enhanced Quality of Life. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0. 16-121. Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Virginia Litter and Recycling Grant from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality in the Amount of $16,610 and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2015 Grants Fund to Promote Litter Prevention, Recycling Efforts, and Stormwater and Waste Management Programs. Vision Principle, vision, excuse me, Sustainable Neighborhoods and Enhanced Quality of Life. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 6-0. New Business, 16-122. Boards and Commissions, Councilman Adams.
Not at this time.
Thank you. 16-123. Items Submitted by Council Members.
Well, I've got three quick, small items, and I want to make sure that, first of all, we apologize for the tardiness of the hour. We had some very pressing information to discuss, and it was of a closed session nature. And so, again, we do apologize for that. Secondly, I want to congratulate, yesterday, Prime Plus and our senior retirement volunteer organization named Mr. William Wilson here at Portsmouth, Virginia, as our Senior Volunteer of the Year. Mr. Wilson is a resident at Ebenezer Plaza, and he spends his mornings getting up and knocking on all the other seniors' doors and making sure everybody is awake and accounted for. And it was great to have other members in the public there to witness this, as well as our chief. And so I want to say congratulations to, again, Mr. William Wilson from Ebenezer Plaza. Secondly, you saw the pinwheel that I brought in. We all hopefully know by now, this month is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I don't know if Susan is in the audience or not, but I want to thank our Commonwealth attorney, Ms. Morales, for speaking at this year's kickoff. And she spoke so eloquently about the issues affecting child abuse and how some of those things are visible and some are not, and the things that we should all be cognizant of within our communities and within our families. And so, please, I think they're selling these. I don't have all that data. I hope she comes up and speaks. I don't see her. But I did stop by yesterday, IC Norcom. They were putting theirs out, and I think as a senior class project, the seniors at IC Norcom raised about $500 to contribute to the friends. And so I think all of the schools are doing it as projects and other organizations. So as you see and ride through our city and see these pinwheels out, I think we still have all of our pinwheels over at the park by the pavilion. Take note of it and be cognizant of it. And with that, I'll end by saying tomorrow, where I'll be addressing our State of the City, my sixth one this year, this term of office. This is my sixth year, and it'll be tomorrow at 12:00 noon at the Renaissance Hotel. Anyone that hasn't got a ticket, you can contact the Chamber of Commerce. Understand, we've got over 500 people in attendance, which is a pretty good crowd. And so with that, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, if you'll join me with your glasses. We're being cool tonight because we had a wonderful presentation at the work session by our acting deputy manager, LaVore Pace, about what's going on in the city. And he shared with us these wonderful glasses that are being given away to folks that come to the Thursdays at Portside, which will begin very shortly. So we're going to look cool, but I'm going to have to take them off to finish reading what I have to say. So come to Portside and get your cool glasses. They have the Portsmouth logo on the side. There is a whole lot going on between now and the next time we meet, so I want to share with you a couple of items. First of all, a very big thank you to our 911 dispatchers, those heroes that we never see and only speak to. This is National Public Safety Telecommunication Week. So a big thank you to all our dispatchers and police and fire. Tomorrow, all the tall people come to town. That means it's PIT time. That's the Portsmouth Invitational Tournament in its 64th year at Churchill and High School. The great college basketball players will be here with all the scouts from all over the world, literally, where we've had the likes of Scottie Pippen and Dennis Rodman and some really great basketball players. The Lynn guy from Harvard, who everybody thought was crazy that Harvard didn't have basketball players, and he turned out to be quite something. The games begin tomorrow afternoon at Churchill and High School, Thursday afternoon, evening, Friday afternoon, evening, and the grand tournament on Saturday. Tickets are available $10 a night or a book of 32. You can call, a book for all the games for $32. You can get more information on the games at 541-8285 or online at portsmithinvitational.com. Next on the list...
Can I interrupt? Our very own native Doran Finney Smith from IC Norcom has been invited, and he has accepted the invitation, and he'll be here, as well as Old Dominion's Trey Freeman. So he'll be here. So we'll have two locals here at this time. So come on in and root for the home team, Vice Mayor.
After this coming weekend, on Saturday, we have the Great American Cleanup, which was begun by the Portsmouth Rotary Clubs, Paint Your Heart Out. There will be about a dozen homes that are spruced up and painted by members of the Rotary Club with assistance from all sorts of folks within the city and other organizations. We also have a many farmers market. We have the Humane Society's 8th Annual Cause for the PAWS, P-A-W-S, which is at the Portside location to raise awareness and funds for our fur babies. And that's always a fun event. There's a dog walk that goes along with that on Saturday morning. And before we meet again, as part of Chief Chapman's community outreach, I encourage you also to hear her report to the City Council from tonight's earlier work session. She is going to have Coffee with a Cop. And this will be on May the 19th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at The Coffee Shop. That is the name of the store, The Coffee Shop, at 300 High Street. And it will be no agendas, no speeches. A chance to ask questions and voice your concerns with officers in your neighborhood. So I encourage folks to come and talk to their neighborhood police officers, May 19th, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at The Coffee Shop at 300 High Street. And I think that'll do us for, until the next meeting.
All right. Well done. All right. Any other items submitted by council members? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 16-124. Report on pending items, and we have none this evening.
Okay, we have one. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our previous meetings, we've received updates on the Virginia Retirement System issue that has been brought to our attention. In our previous session, I voted no because I didn't think that certain of the information was for closed session, particularly updating the citizens on issues involving our tax dollars, given that there's a significant obligation that the city may be liable for because of some VRS transactions. And so, Dr. Patton, could you give us an update tonight on the VRS investigation due to the double payments that we were making to a former employee?
Yes, Councilman Whitaker. We are continuing our communication with the Virginia Retirement System regarding a personnel issue of a former city employee regarding a possible liability of $480,882.11. This amount is subject to change. We're continuing to communicate with VRS.
Question.
Yeah, Dr. Whitaker.
Of that amount, is there any possibility that it's going to increase beyond $480,000 that we would be liable for paying to Virginia Retirement System?
Yes, the amount will possibly change, and that would be an increase.
Okay. And this will not come out of some type of insurance fund, or will this be coming out of some type of general fund that we will have to pay this from?
Sir, at this time, there is no fund to identify for this to come out of.
So those, these would be taxpayer dollars that we have to use to pay this debt?
Once we determine, as we continue to communicate, we will have to determine. But there is not a fund that's available at this time.
Okay. Also, is there any indication that we may have to forward this matter to others' agencies within the city?
That's a possibility, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 16-125. Non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Barry Randall. And as Mr. Randall comes forward, the next speaker will be Mr. Ronald Jordan.
Good evening, members of City Council. Barry Randall, Brighton, Section of Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to speak to a particular sentence that was shared in an article a couple weeks back concerning the auditor. Mr. Mayor, you spoke of him as your auditor, even though the taxpayers are paying his salary. I've spoke to some firemen and different people. We have firemen that are working and doing jobs, acting as battalion chiefs, but are not getting paid. We have police officers that can't work overtime and help solve some of these crimes because it's a freeze. So my question is, in my research, I come across, and this is public information, your auditor, Mr. Mayor, was sued by his homeowners association back in 2013 and '14 for almost $3,000. So my question to you is, did you hire him and offer him a salary of almost six figures so that he can continue to pay his bills? And the reason why I'm asking that, because my checking account was garnishierred by Jimmy Williams, and I'm not mad with you, Jimmy. I owe some taxes, and he took over $1,000 out of my bank account. So if you're in the business of giving out jobs, do you have one for me? And you can pay me half of what you pay him. Because I think it's an insult to these people that you have. You all are talking about diversity and all of these studies and what have you, but you have firemen that's going to watch this tonight that are doing jobs.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Vice Mayor?
We did not allow personal attacks. Mr. Randall, as often as I've been the butt of your attacks, and I'm no fan of the auditors, I can't let you make a personal attack like this.
Thank you.
I'm not, may I respond to her?
The matter is addressed, and I agree, no, you cannot. You need to move on.
Well, that is fine.
Okay. No personal attacks.
No, this is not a personal attack. This is a public information. And Madam Vice Mayor, we consider you the number two on the other side of the personnel. So since, so hopefully you'll answer this question. Do you know what the auditor does, the ninety-seven thousand dollars that we pay him? We can pay three police officers a year coming out of the academy with his salary. You all are so busy trying to tear down the old goody boy network, but you don't realize you've become one yourself. Because let's tell the truth, let me connect the dots. And this is not a personal attack. This is facts. Your auditor belongs to the president of the Martin Luther King Steering Committee's church, who controls you. So therefore, again, are we paying him to pay his lawsuits, or did you pay him?
Mr. Ronald Jordan?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
We know that, just for truth purposes, the mayor doesn't hire the auditor. The City Council hires auditors. It's not a one person hiring. And so if we're going to stand up here and be truthful, let's be truthful about it, that this was a council hiring. And want to make sure that those who have come to see a show, that you are basing that not to come here on entertainment, but for proper information.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jordan can come forward, and he's followed by Jean Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, citizens of Portsmouth. My name's Ronald W. Jordan Jr. I live at 40008 Estates Lane. I had addressed this council back on 22 March, talking about the service delivery of social services and the protection of children and senior citizens in our community and the concerns on those stats. I never got to finish, and nobody on council decided, asked, "Mr. Jordan, while you can't finish reading, why don't you tell us what your point was?" So I'm going to tell you the last part, and I expect you all to remember what you learned on the 22nd. The reason why I'm bringing this to your attention is because, first of all, I'm not looking for a job. The county I work for, I love, they respect the work I do, and they appreciate it. I'm here because, as a citizen observing what is happening to our city in Portsmouth, it's bittersweet. First, it breaks my heart that what took nine years to build to become the best agency only took three short years to destroy. Yet, I feel vindicated that I served the citizens of Portsmouth effectively and efficiently. The reason I'm speaking to you tonight and giving you Part B, or do, is to offer my assistance to city leadership in reversing the current trend concerning statistics, concerning another child being lost or another family going unserved. And because now nobody on city leadership can say they weren't aware of the current situation. Thank you. And it's got a minute and thirty-six.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Ms. Jean Bondi, and she's followed by Ms. Dolores Knight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager and staff. My name is Jean Bondi. I live at 13 Afton Parkway, and I'm president of the Craddock Civic League. Tonight, I'm here for two reasons. First, I would like to invite you to our annual Spring Fest on May 7th in historic Afton Square from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We do hope to see you there. Secondly, the Craddock Civic League asked that I speak to you about a letter of support we sent to this council in January urging you to keep Willabrader as the solid waste processor of choice. I'm here to restate that support and to summarize the reasons for our continued support. I have provided you with a copy of that letter. The deal SIPSa made with Repower leaves a lot of questions unanswered. Repower will use an untested technology they think will work. If it doesn't work, all of the trash will be sent to a landfill. Costs to switch to Repower appear to have been vastly underestimated. The Willabrader location has a transfer station. With Repower, a new one will be built. The Craddock Civic League is satisfied that by staying with Willabrader, which is in our backyard, we have a trusted community partner that strives to keep the errand streets clean and is responsive to any concerns. With a new SIPSa-run transfer station, we don't have those guarantees. And how much will this new transfer station cost? Has that expense been figured into the overall savings by switching to Repower? You would have us believe that staying with Repower is a more expensive option, but is it really? And at what cost to our environment? Willabrader is one of the biggest taxpayers in Portsmouth. They're also one of our largest water customers. Has the loss of either of these revenue streams, which is nearly $3 million a year, been calculated in the savings by switching to Repower? Their new plant will be located in Chesapeake. Norfolk Naval Shipyard is in our neighborhood, and many of our residents work there. The massive waste energy plant in Craddock is important to the Navy because it produces steam to heat the shipyard buildings and dry docks, as well as electricity. If the Navy were to lose these vital resources and felt the need to downsize, how would Portsmouth replace those jobs? Willabrader is civic-minded and provides the following. Support for neighborhood activities and events. Sponsors for an annual scholarship for a Portsmouth High School senior. Supports a middle school program. Provides funds to host local nonprofits, and much more. Losing Willabrader would be detrimental to the Navy and to this city's economy. They have earned our trust and backing and have proven to be an outstanding corporate neighbor. For the reasons cited above, on January 5th, 2016, the Craddock Civic League voted to support Willabrader and to encourage this city to advocate strongly for them to continue providing solid waste disposal for the SIPSa communities after the current contract ends in 2018. We reaffirm that support on April 5th. We ask that you reconsider the switch to the untested Repower. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Dolores Knight, and she's followed by Ms. Maggie McGruder.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Attorney. I am here tonight to speak of... I am here tonight to speak of what is right for citizens of Portsmouth when it comes to decision-making, for no agreement with SIPSa unless Willabrader is included for disposal options. Honestly, there should be no second thoughts of decision votes cast by the representatives of Portsmouth for it, because we, as the citizens, know and support Willabrader Portsmouth in doing good deeds throughout our city. Just let me give you a few good reasons why I say this. Willabrader Portsmouth works with the students of Waldorf Middle School and send the group for classes in Florida to do OSHA research. They support a scholarship for Portsmouth High School student who will graduate. Sports Hall of Fame gives tours of plants once hosted Great American Cleanup in Craddock Square. Joining Paradise Creek for special events helped clean Elizabeth River last year. Willabrader Portsmouth won Business River Star Hall of Fame last year, twenty fifteen, award for environmental stewardship. A great job will be done always. Also, I must add that Willabrader has their own street sweeper. Yes, they have their own street sweeper. They use their odorized system, and they have a magnetized bar at the front of the of the street sweeper. And it's there to pick up nails, nuts, and bolts that trucks just falls off. And they just decided to do this. They did this themselves. And his name who does this is Greg, who works and picks up trash when the weather's permitting, and he does all the jobs that are planned. He's always here, there, and everywhere. But he lost his job, especially when someone would stop and ask him, "Are you sweeping my street today?" And the reason we can tell the difference is because it doesn't have a logo, city logo, nor it does have a number on it. We know that Willabrader pays three million dollars taxes in the city's services per year, plus makes steam for Norfolk Naval Shipyard and city services and sells electricity. Plus, we have a monthly report from Willabrader. Every month, a Craddock Civic League meeting is used by Rob Johnson, who is the plant manager. Willabrader also supports the Craddock Civic League for Christmas in Craddock and helping children and other good deeds often. There's a lot more good naval policy with Willabrader Portsmouth involved in well, as they come and welcome new ideas and challenges for the city of Portsmouth. Maybe we can understand why I am so very thankful to have such a good neighbor. I am definitely standing behind Willabrader Portsmouth.
Thank you very much. Good night, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, good night. Don't forget Willabrader Portsmouth.
Alright, thank you.
Ms. Maggie McGruder, and she's followed by Mr. Mark Goddoldikutrovsky.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Representatives. We, the people, just want to be told what's going on in our city before it happens. After all, it is our money that is being spent. Most cities do not talk in secrecy about this new trash contract with Repower and their concerns with SIPSa making the decisions and rules the cities will have to follow with this new contract. Portsmouth has said nothing. Is it a secret? SIPSa's new plan is to stop commercially hauled trash. That means the region's private haulers, who handle more than two hundred thousand tons of trash a year, will have to find a new place to get rid of the garbage they collect. Also, SIPSa's plan to send as much as a hundred and thirty-five thousand tons of trash a year to the landfill that this new facility cannot process. Why can't the new facility process all the items that Willabrader took care of so it does not have to fill up more space in the landfill in Suffolk? As much money as Portsmouth needs, why is Portsmouth not fighting to keep Willabrader as a contract? Because Willabrader brings into Portsmouth three million dollars a year through taxes and water purchases. If Portsmouth is not fighting to keep Willabrader, you are just sending that money right on over to Chesapeake. And if we go with the new contract, we will have more trucks hauling trash on our streets. And do we really want that? So what is Portsmouth doing in this vote? Are we just giving this money away? If so, can someone tell us, citizens, why? How can you vote in the best interest of Portsmouth for this new company to take over the trash contract when we are voting to take money away from Portsmouth? All of you on City Council are supposed to be looking out for our city. Please think about Portsmouth when you make any decisions when you vote. Do what is best for our city and for all the people here. SIPSa is not making the best decisions for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGruder. Uh, Dr. Whitaker?
Uh, Ms. McGruder? I appreciate your comments, and you have a right to speak as well as any other citizen.
Yes.
My only concern is, for transparency purposes, Ms. Donna Si sent an email to a whole lot of people all across the state. And the email that she sent contained the statement that you read at our previous meeting. And the email indicated that it wasn't your speech, but it was a speech written by Mr. Joel Rubin on behalf of Willabrader. And so I have no problems with citizens coming to speak before us, but I do have a problem when others are sending speakers before us, because we do want to hear from the citizens. And if those persons want to represent their views, they should represent their views. And so-
That's what I'm doing tonight.
Well, it just, in the spirit of transparency, when she sent that out with the exact message that you read, and it was written by Mr. Rubin, it just didn't give that type of appearance, and we like to hear from the citizens.
You can respond.
Well, I-
You can respond.
Can I respond? Um, I know that Willabrader has been with the trash contract for a long time, and has supported the region for a long time, and has supported the region, even when it was financially in trouble. So I think that Willabrader has shown the region its support. This new company that has come in, I don't really think that they are that supportive. I don't think they can be. Also, this new company has really not proven anything as to what they can do. They have just said that their tipping fee is gonna be this amount. They really haven't proven that they could do anything any cheaper than Willabrader. They're just saying this.
If I could, please, in respect to Dr. Whitaker, he asked you a question about someone giving you information to read to us on behalf of them instead of yourself, not the rationale that you gave. You articulated that pretty well. Did she answer your question, sir, or not?
Right. I just was trying to share with you that we want to hear from the citizens. And when the citizens come and speak to us out of transparency, when they're standing before us, it shouldn't be the organization. If the organization is going to speak to us, then let the organization speak. And just, there's a lot of discussion about transparency, and when we see others writing speeches for others, it just doesn't give the appearance of genuineness.
Well, do you not agree that all the money that Willabrader brings into the city of Portsmouth, and that y'all are not even fighting to keep it here? Do you not think that that is a genuine statement?
Well, a decision hasn't been made.
Well, none of the citizens know, because you don't talk about it. Everything is so secretive. So I'm just bringing that out, Mr. Whitaker.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Following Mr. Goddoldikutrovsky is Mr. Sergio Neil.
Mayor, members of council, and fellow citizens. As somebody who has attended two recent SIPSa proceedings with Ms. McGruder, Ms. Si, and others, I want to say that Ms. McGruder's remarks, you will find in the official minutes of SIPSa. And the first speech she made was before she had any encounter with Mr. Rubin. The sentiments expressed are substantially the same as the statement she has subsequently read. I want to say that the Repower contract reminds me of an old bromide, as Mayor Hawley used to say. A lady walks into a grocery store, goes to the produce counter, and examines the price of bananas, and she's not happy. They're marked at sixty-nine cents a pound. She hunts down the produce manager and says, "Why are your bananas so high? The store down the street sells them for forty-nine cents a pound." Produce manager says, "Well, you know, we have to make a profit." He explains the rationale for the pricing. And finally, he says, "And so, you know, this is the best we can do. Why aren't you buying the bananas down the street?" "Well, they don't have any in stock." The produce manager said, "Oh, well, let me explain. When we don't have any in stock, ours are thirty-nine cents a pound. This is what we are buying with the Repower deal. They have no plant that operates in the manner they are proposing. There is none anywhere in this country that does what theirs is supposed to do. We have a proven performer in Willabrader, as my neighbors from Craddock have stated so eloquently. They are a good corporate citizen, and they are filling our coffers with revenue in the form of taxes and with money for the purchase of water. They are supporting an essential employer in this city, the Naval Shipyard. So it is in our interests to ensure that they succeed. And we will succeed if we stay in a business relationship with them. I'm a big proponent of regionalism, but I think in this instance, if our neighbors decide to go in another direction, we need to go our own route and remain with Willabrader. Thank you very much."
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sergio Neil, and he's followed by Mr. Randy Bailey.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Sergio Neil. I am the chairman of Circle of Youth. And I've also come to present some information to you for an event that's happening on Tuesday, April nineteenth, at seven PM at Roger Brown's. It's an event called "Bridge in the Gap." It's a chat-and-choose session presented by Mr. Barry Randall with several citizens and elected leadership from the city of Portsmouth. Some of the people, well, all the people are as follows. Ms. Angelina Allen, Mr. James Bailey, Dr. Jackie Walker, Mr. James Patrick Boyd, Mr. Terrence Austin, myself, Mr. Robbie Bradshaw, Ms. Kathy Revell, Mr. Danny Meeks, Vice Mayor Simmons, Mr. Mark, he knows who I'm talking about, Ms. Sarah Duncan-Hyde, and Mr. Tony Goodwin. Basically, what we'll be talking about is race relations and how we, as all people represented by all races, by all races, can come together and end this problem with racism all over the country. No one can succeed being divided. It all takes unity, no matter what you look like, no matter what you wear. It all takes everyone. So again, we're inviting all of you to come out. Especially, I would like to invite the young people to come out to see what race relations really are all about, and that was just shown on TV. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Randy Bailey, and he's followed by Mr. Michael Thornton.
Well, every time I go out of town, you guys amaze me. I'm gonna talk about garbage, but it's gonna be the budget. Somehow, you made it work? I don't believe it. But that's neither here nor there. Ms. Simmons, if you could reach behind you and open the door and let Harry Houdini out, we could ask him how the budget got balanced. Two days ago, there were two pieces of fire apparatus that were not operational, but you're only short four firefighters. Well, if there's four people to an apparatus, and you're only short four, how come there's two pieces of equipment not working? That seems to me there's eight people missing. You've got Commonwealth attorneys wrestling people in court. What happened? You've got inmates dying in a regional jail. Mr. Edmonds, you and I had a discussion about the dog and pony show that they gave you over there? Well, they gave you a show. If that man had been in the Portsmouth jail, he would not have starved to death. The deputies over here would not have allowed that to happen. He would have been better cared for. You guys, you've really got to get things together. This isn't working. And I don't believe this budget is working. Pretty soon, we're gonna be seeing foreclosed signs on the entrances to the city, and the feds are gonna be taking over. You're talking about Virginia Retirement. You need four hundred thousand dollars. Well, it seems to me somebody owes that much in taxes. Maybe you can get the money there. Something to think about. And you can forget about that monument, because if somebody goes after that monument, I'm gonna make sure the Coast Guard disavows this place as a Coast Guard city. I've already talked to the commandant. I was in DC last week. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Michael Thornton, and he's followed by Mr. Steve Carroll.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak. It's an honor to be a part of the Black Sales community. Then God said, "Let there be light," and there was light. And God saw the light, that it was good. Psalm seventy-four, verse twenty reads, "Have respect to the covenant, for the dark places of the earth are full of the haunts of cruelty. When there is light, your chances of being hit by a vehicle are reduced. When there is light, places are less likely to be broken into. When there is light, it is more difficult to sneak up on somebody. The right amount of light can improve the quality of any neighborhood. Brighten, brighten. Light is a pretty good investment." And that's all I wrote. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve Carroll, and he's followed by Ms. Donna Si.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Long time no see. As usual, my job has me swamped. I'm not gonna address the entire budget night, because I'm factually not prepared to do so, but I will address part of it. We recently had a fire with a fatality in Churchland. Took six minutes for the first responder to get there, twelve minutes, eighteen minutes for the second responder. Had that happened during the day, the response would have probably been longer. We have upper-level supervision that's being forced to work beyond their job classification without compensation. without compensation. We should have two battalion chiefs per shift. We have two for the entire city. A member of council has said that Mr. Clark's comments about these shortages are anecdotal. Is it anecdotal that ladder unit number three on Riverside Road and engine unit number two on Effingham Street were out of service this past Saturday? Is it anecdotal, as I speak tonight, that ladder unit number three on Riverside Road is out of service? Is that anecdotal? Mrs. Simmons's comments about the auditor dated 4/216 are right on point. He needs to go. He's not pulling his load. He's not worth what we're paying him. But that only tells half the story. Myself and a number of other citizens demanded an auditor because of the outrage we felt over the abuses, the fiscal abuses of our school board. Those abuses were documented and condemned by a grand jury. As part of hiring that auditor, we begged and pleaded with you to make that auditor subject to a citizen advisory committee staffed with civic leaders from non-aligned civic organizations. Our concerns were more than justified, and you ignored that suggestion. For what we're getting for this auditor, we could easily hire two firemen or two policemen and have money in the bank. Somebody said three. I'll stand with the benefits. I'll stand with two. I'm going to continue looking at this budget, but I'm not factually prepared to do that, and it'd be unfair to comment. As has been pointed out, we had a wrestling match between a Commonwealth attorney and an inmate because of lack of manny. Our homicide rate is through the roof.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Good night.
Ms. Donna Tsai. She's followed by Mr. Brian Skanel.
Good evening. My name is Donna Tsai, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. The planning department is not doing its job, because principle of liberty 14 states that life and liberty are secure only so long as the right of property is secure. And principle of liberty 17, a system of checks and balances should be adopted to prevent the abuse of power. Our life and liberty are not secure, and neither is our right to property. The reason? We do not have a system of checks and balances to prevent city council and the anointed staff of the planning department from their abuses of power. The purpose of this, the Constitution is to define the areas in which you, as public officials, can serve us with your utmost ability, and it also places strict limitations on you to keep you from doing mischief. Mischief is still happening in Portsmouth. There are few of us who are answering the call to follow our God-given duty to hold our civil servants accountable for all the mischief that is being done to we, the people. Consider my presentation as a petition for the relief of our injuries you have caused us. The city council has injured us by combining with the region to subject us to jurisdiction foreign to our Constitution and unacknowledged by our local laws, given your consent to the region's acts of pretended legislation. Two of these acts of pretended legislation is the Transportation Act and property codes. Many people in Portsmouth need to ride the bus, yet no one is providing them with the service they need. One individual came before city council and requested help for the Peachtree community. No help came. Tonight, another request has come to light for transportation. It is a stop at Walmart in Chesapeake. A conversation with Mr. Stoverland at the HRT in Norfolk revealed that stops could be done. The problem is, the planning department has not been held accountable for failing to do its duty, hold conversations with the people to meet their needs to ride the bus. Councilman Cherry, you are the liaison to the planning department, and Mr. Baldwin, you are the director of planning. We need an appointment with both of you to discuss the needs of the people. Another act is property codes. The planning department is a single entity responsible for implementing the downtown vision, but they are not. Therefore, our rights to life, liberty, and property are no longer secure. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Tsai. Vice Mayor Simmons?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Carroll's comments earlier. He ended his remarks with a sentence that said, "And our homicide rate is through the roof." I don't like to debate constituents, but that is not factual. We have had one homicide in this city this calendar year, as of today, April 12th. It was about a week ago, which, as sad as that is, is a good sign. So I just wanted to correct that.[942.52][942.52](APPLAUSE).
Madam clerk?
Mr. Brian Skanel. And he's followed by Mr. Nathan Clark.
When I moved to Portsmouth, many, number decades ago now, I have to be honest, the city was fairly racially harmonic. I live in a diverse neighborhood. There was people of all races, ages. Everybody got along. No real problems. Noticed here recently, though, that a number of folks are, have discovered the secret of using racial division to create fear, to control their voters. That's a bad path for our city and for its citizens. I also want to bring up and reiterate what Mr. Neal brought out. The Chat and Chew, next Tuesday, 7:00 PM, Roger Brown. It's a very diverse board of speakers. I think it'd be a good thing for every one of you to attend, if you can make it, and join us, and let's see what we can figure out about unity, getting Portsmouth back to the racial harmony that it once had, and trying to fix our problems. So, next Tuesday, 7:00 PM, Roger Brown's Chat and Chew Unity Rally. Hope to see you all there. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Skanel.
Mr. Nathan Clark is followed by Mr. Coleman Young.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Clark, and I'm here on behalf of the Portsmouth Professional Firefighters and Paramedics. At the last city council meeting, Mayor Wright, you stated that someone had previously spoken before council with what you called grossly inaccurate statistics. In reference to our fire department personnel, that someone was me. And to reiterate, my name is Nathan Clark, and you should remember that, because you'll be hearing a lot more from me. I'm here tonight to set the record straight. My numbers were and continue to be accurate. The city manager stated, and I quote, "As of today, March 22nd, we have four firefighter vacancies." Four firefighter vacancies. I wanted to repeat that number twice. If that number was accurate, how is it possible that there was an attempt to hire 14 firefighters this past week, which we were only successful in getting nine recruits that reported for service yesterday morning, because other ones chose not to accept the invitation for employment within our city? In addition, I'm in possession of a roster from 2013, not 2016 years ago, which was stated. And at that time, including the nine that were hired yesterday morning, we had 14 more firefighters within the last three years. And at that time, we were not even fully staffed, even though we had that many more The reduction of firefighters in the community has placed citizens at risk. Almost daily, we have fire trucks placed out of service, because there are not enough firefighters to operate them. And as we speak right now, ladder three is out of service once again at this moment, which is leaving our Churchland area of the city unprotected without a ladder truck. Currently, there is talk of putting one fire truck out of service permanently. If we were only short four firefighters, this would not be a consideration. In the spirit of transparency, the citizens deserve the truth. We need to reduce the level of danger in the city before the city is reduced by the level of danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.[1207.22][1207.22](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Coleman Young. And he's followed by Mr. Ross Cherry.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm co-organizer of the group, Virginia for Lovers, Not Races. What I'd like to do at this time, I'd like all the people that participated in our walk to stand up and be recognized. Can I have the ones, the steering committee, stand up, please?
Okay. Steering committee? All right.
Yeah, David, say it.
Steering committee, all right.
These, what do we, one, two, about six or eight are the ones that got together, came met on Sunday, put the word out, went on Facebook, did everything they possibly can. These are people that believe hard, a great deal about it. The ones that came to walk. You were here, you saw raining, it was cold, they came out. They believe in this, that it doesn't make a difference, any group they have. There is racism and prejudice with all groups, white, blacks, Hispanics, and Muslims. And we want to come together to solve these problems. Now, I'd like to have me stand up, one second. This young lady is a diamond, if there ever was one, in this city. You could ever met her, she has energy, enthusiasm, she believes in this to the depth of her heart. I've seen her with tears in her eyes believing this. And if we, if the city had a thousand people like her in this city, they would be extremely proud of this lady. This lady loves this city and wants the best for this city, and she loves every person. Last time y'all saw her, she came here, she was talking about being intimidated by the homeless, because she owns a business, it would intimidate her customers. The following Thanksgiving, she's out there giving toilet kits and feeding, providing lunches for the homeless. She's a woman of love for everybody. Tonight, I'd like to focus on three concepts, three ideas. One is the responsibility of city council. Two, everybody is valuable. Number three, that we need to have a solution. Members of council, y'all been elected on trust of individual. We trust you to make decisions with limited resources. We know it's difficult. We know that any decision you make, half people like it, half don't. But you chose to go here, and we release, transfer our trust to you to do that. We expect y'all to be transparent, to be accountable. When issues come up, to explain it so the public knows. And now, you represent all, all citizens. Now, if a citizen has a title of a Portsmouth citizen, doesn't make any difference if they're white, black, blue, or whatever, if they're... Is my time up?
Yes, sir.[1402.83][1402.83](LAUGHTER). Let me, just to help you out with a little of your time, Mr. Coleman Young, let me, let me first of all applaud you and the other organizers and all of the citizens that participated in this. This is, I think, a long time coming. You have no idea, as a leader, what it means to see citizens getting involved and taking things on their own, to show that it is a citizen-led group. You and I had a real heartfelt discussion, I believe it was Saturday. We've got a new business that just opened up in downtown Portsmouth, VIP Photography, and Mr. Young was in there, and he and I chatted. And it was actually a very good conversation. I played devil's advocate on purpose, because he was wanting to know what I thought of having a reform on race relations, and where could we have it, and what should we do? And I kind of jumped on the opposite side of the fence with him, just to show him the pitfalls that we could get into if we don't do this the right way and make sure we share and talk to one another. And what I did not share with you is WHRO, and I'll let you speak after I get done with this. WHRO has been having a series on race relations now for the last several months. About two months ago, I went over to their studio, and I think Mark was there. Where's Mark Goodoja? And they talked about, I think the subject was white privilege. And it was a very diverse studio. It really was amazing. And what they did is what you and I were talking about in that shop, and we probably shouldn't have been doing it at their grand opening, but it's...
I waited until you made it to it.
Anytime's a good time to talk about race relations. So, anyway, they showed a video clip, and they showed how different people respond, depending on whether it was a white person or a black person. And I just panned around the audience and looked, and you could see the amazement on people's faces that weren't of that nationality or race, to see how people respond and how institutionalized racism is, and how we all have our own biases, as you just said. And that was very powerful. And that was the reason I played devil's advocate with you, because if we're going to do this, and I'm fully in support of having a forum and having a continued conversation on race relations, we need to make sure we understand the point of reference from where everybody stands. And so, again, I applaud you for what you're doing. I actually enjoyed the conversation. I don't know what you thought when you left it, but for all of you here, I'm just sorry it rained. I know you had way more people scheduled to come. I heard a lot of people talking about it, and that is good. And it is a good first step. And again, I applaud you for that. So if you want to respond, because you are all the time, I can't let you give a major speech, but no, thank you for what you did. And I think I followed you to your house on Dinwiddie, just to continue the conversation outside of there, because I really do applaud what you're trying to do and all of the other citizens. And I think it's high time to have that conversation in a fair and respectable way.
Let me just make one, one...
Sure.
One comment. The part about the solution. It's not a case of just having a forum, have people come and talk, because it's done before. It's not going to accomplish anything. If I broke my leg, I don't expect my next-door neighbor, who's a car mechanic, to repair it. This council, as intent as they are, need a professional person to come in, because it is volatile. That we were aiming for a chance for people to talk, to listen to, to listen to the other person, to see their viewpoint.
Right.
The only way you can learn is by listening. You do not learn anything by talking. And to be able to have the group dynamics and communication that's necessary. This is serious. Why would we have 50 people out in the cold, the rain, to come here, because they believe in it? They believe there's a problem for all groups, that love should be for everybody, not one group be pitted against another.
That's right.
That is what's happening here. And it's wrong. It's wrong in the past, it's wrong in the present, it's wrong in the future, and every...
And we couldn't agree more. That's exactly right. Thank you.
It doesn't make...
And, let me just, let me just, no, Mr. Young, I know you well, and I know there's never an ending to your speech. So, let me just, let me just share, again, I want to applaud you. I noticed we have quite a few speakers on behalf of the Love Walk. And again, I'd like for you, if you want to come up and speak, or you want to echo what he said, please do so. But again, we applaud what you're doing. I think it's vital, and I think it needs to be visible. And I hope the media is here tonight because of something good about us as a people. We're the most diverse city in this region, okay? We've got a lot riding on this. Hampton Roads eventually will be facing some of the relations that Portsmouth is, okay? This is a region of 1.7 million people. There's another 300,000 will be here in the next 20 years. And they're all of different groups, okay? And you go and travel around other cities and other regions in this country, and these issues are not as prevalent. And it's extremely important, whether you're talking about race relations, whether you're talking about contracting and equality for women and minorities. Go to Charlotte, go to Atlanta, go to Tucson, Arizona, go down to South Florida. We've sent the delegation of folks here, and the reason I'm telling you this, and we're trying to measure Hampton Roads and compare it to what other regions are doing throughout the country. And a lot of them, even though those things exist, they're beyond that. We've got to get beyond there, too. And one of the things that bother me is our young people. We're having a brain drain here in this region. Our young people are going off to college and not coming back, because if you don't, if you're not part of a clique, if you don't know somebody that can give you a leg up, your idea or your new business, all of those types of things, won't prosper here, because we're too cliquish. we're too cliquish. And part of what we're trying to do is make sure that those things and those walls are brought down here in Portsmouth, because we've got a lot of smart, young kids that are leaving here and not coming back. That's just not Portsmouth, that's Virginia Beach, that's Norfolk, that's all the Hampton Roads. It is a shame. They're going to Charlotte, they're going to Raleigh, okay? It is because of these things that you're trying to address here. That's why I applaud what you're trying to do. But we just can't keep it in the little box that we want it. This is a broader issue, and it is all about equality and treating people with respect. This whole contracting piece and all the other things that we're talking about here, it's a broader piece of what you guys are focusing on. So, again, thank you, please don't respond, because I gave you enough time, but you've got several speakers, and if you'd like to continue to speak, fine. If not, thank you for what it is you're doing, and I hope you have another one outside of our council meeting and on a different day, so we can all participate. But I look forward to that forum, okay? Thank you, sir. Bless you.
Mr. Ross Cherry. He's followed by Andre Holland.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I apologize if I don't have anything necessarily put together, I was asked by the group if I would give a couple of comments. I walk tonight on behalf of the Love Walk, because I have grown up in this city since I was born. I've been a part of it, my family has been an integral part of this city. We've watched it grow, we've watched it build. My family has done it on the basis of love, on the basis of taking care of each other. We've had no ulterior motives, other than building a city and doing it the best possible manner. I see a racial divide in our city, I see it happening in our country, and I see it mainly in our city. I feel like it is a political action to try to split groups and to create followers. Mayor, with all due respect, I hope that you actually speak what you just said, because I have unfortunately read some of your Facebook posts, and I disagree with your truth in that. I've seen some of it, and I do believe it's trying to be racially split. This group cares about this city, this group cares about each other. Unless we're acting from our heart, and unless we're acting in the truth of love, bishops, ministers, I hope you understand where I'm coming from, that we will never be one, we will never walk together as one. My family teaches empathy, respect, acceptance, that's all I know. I was reading a Facebook post one day, because I am on the Board of the People for Portsmouth, and I was being called a Klan member, I was being called a racist by people who don't know me at all, they have never met me. So, I was talking to a friend of mine, I said, "What do I do?" He said, "You know, Jesus never went out and spoke it, he showed who he was." So, Coleman and Ami, and we've come together to try to talk about and to try to show who we are, and not to use words, but to be real in what we say, to do it from our heart and to do it from truth. I am on the People for Portsmouth, it is about better leadership. It has absolutely nothing to do with color. It has to do with proper leadership that is invested in the city for all of the people together, not one group, not paying somebody back, but in what is the best interest of the majority of the people. I'm proud to be on it. I will sit here right now and say that it has nothing to do with color, we invite everybody to be a part of it, and I hope that everybody can speak what they say, but I hope they actually show it in their actions and how they communicate and how they work together. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Andre Holland.
I'm believing this is Andrea.
Andre Holland, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simms, alright? And members of city council, my name is Andre Holland, and I'm here with the group Virginia's for Lovers, Not Races. We stand for all people and not some people. Our group is not Virginia's for Lovers, not white racists, our group is not Virginia's for Lovers, not black racists. Our group is, however, discontented with the racism that's constantly being invaded on so many levels, we had to put it on outline from form to even discuss it. We realize there are racist people in every race, however, we also realize there are loving, compassionate, empathetic people in every race as well. How do we know? Because our group is composed of just that, everybody loves everybody, we don't see color here. We realize when we could only sympathize with each other, it left us hurt, angry, and frustrated. However, wisdom and history has taught us valuable lessons. Hurt people, hurt people. And what we bury inside, we bury us with. The racial tension is being felt worldwide, but we must start in our own home, with our own leaders, in our own city, in our own hearts. We must understand why individuals think and act the way they do. To do this, we must train ourselves to express empathy and not sympathy. Oftentimes, when people pass away, people send cards of condolences, saying they're sorry for, you know, the passing and whatnot. And within a week or two, all of that is gone. And Virginia is for Lovers, Not Races has a problem with just empathy. It simply means harmony of or agreement and feeling as between persons or on the part of one person with respect to another. See, sympathy says, "I agree you have suffered a major loss, however, sorry for your loss." But those who empathize go a few steps further. You see, empathy is a psychological identification with or vicariously experiencing some of the feelings, thoughts, or attitudes of another. Our founder, Ami, said naturally she could empathize with brown-skinned girls being a brown-skinned girl herself. However, it took some time for her to extend the same act of love free from subconscious biases, not just outside of her race, but inside as well. From about the age of four years old until adulthood, she was reminded by a light-skinned family member who happened to be an adult that she was black, ugly, and would never amount to nothing, just like her mommy. This is where the chips started to build on her black shoulders, hearing black and ugly being used so often together plummeted her self-esteem. In her mind, black was an insult, and until she was able to embrace the beauty in it and what it eludes.
Mr. Holland, thank you very much, well done, well done.
Ms. Rochelle Edwards, and she's followed by Ms. Tiffany Perry.
Good evening. My name's Rochelle Edwards, and I am continuing on what Mr. Holland was speaking. Sorry. She tells of a story of a frail, pale, reserve scripture quoting Caucasian woman from Kansas, who stopped in for her manicure as Ami filed her nails, she asked, "Did she believe in God?" Ami's response was, "Of course." She then asked Ami, "If God is such a gracious, merciful God, and if he loves us all the same, why would he make her skin different?" She stopped in mid-fight inclined to be offensive, but once she looked in her eyes, she realized she was sincerely waiting for an answer. Ami was able to direct her to Revelations, Chapter 1, verse through 13 through 15, and Ami wasn't sure what shocked her the most. Those verses concerning his image or the touch of her skin being soft. The woman's curiosity led her to ask if Ami, "Ask Ami if she could touch Ami, I oblige." They exchanged numbers to share information through phone and email. The woman also asked Ami, Ami, if she, also, the woman also told Ami she was over 65 and never owned a television. Everyone pictures a woman's face the same color as yours. Ami tells a story about a typical day at salon, she was servicing a young woman when her next male appointment showed up a bit early. The cologne he was wearing wasn't favorable by the female client. She tensed up immediately from his scent and dropped his head in shame. She was very uncomfortable, and when Ami asked her why, she told her she would tell her later. What she shared with Ami was the man was wearing the same fragrance from her uncle, the same fragrance her uncle reaped of the day he raped her in her own school car while his 8-track played. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Tiffany Perry, and she's followed by Ms. Ami Crekmur.
Good evening, Tiffany Perry, continuing. It's understandable how the music of the 70s depressed Ami's client, and it's rude and disrespectful to tell someone just to get over it when you don't know what the it is. It's about empathy, empathy, I'm sorry. We tend to walk by, just can't relate, we must break that habit. It's going to take direction and instructions from our leaders in our community. Those titles that mean more than entitlement, the badge you have doesn't give you a free pass. The pool pick should not be used to push your own agenda, but the agenda of the Most High, God. The political chair should not be held in order to further your power or your personal gain. The manager position should not be used to belittle anyone. We don't need title holders, we need real leaders. A leader is defined, it's guiding or directing head, it's army of a movement or political group. We have systems that's set up that would surely fell us. Everyone here, if you're not familiar with the school-to-prison pipeline, Google that, I repeat, the school-to-prison pipeline, you're familiar with that. Google it before you take your next trip or your next vacation, goo that, Google that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Ms. Ami Crekmur, and she's followed by our final speaker, Ms. Jewel Gatlin.
Good evening.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simms, and the rest of city council, my name is Ami Crekmur, for those who don't know. When we, when Virginia's for Lovers, Not Races embarked on this mission, we realized it would take everyone, the pastors, the politicians, the community leaders, the business owners, the religious, the nonreligious, the atheists, and the agnostics. As what we realize in our outreach is, some folks' hands are tied. We receive calls of encouragement and great work, and words saying we did great work, and they wish they could join us, but I'm military, or I wish I could join, but my job. We received feedback from churches saying they would see what they could do to help us, and still we wait. Our steering committee spoke face-to-face with a few powerful people in the community, and the response was discouraging, to say the least. We understand some hands are tied, however, ours are not. We will speak on behalf of the black police officer that I noticed out of uniform pulled over in front of my house late night, who was confronted by two officers not aware of his position. Noticing his melanated skin and all the police brutality going on, I sat in my car and waited for about seven minutes before they pulled off. When they pulled off, he pulled over to me and thanked me for waiting. He told me that he didn't even, they didn't even have a reason to stop him, and they wouldn't have let him go as early as they did had he not showed his badge. That's a problem. I also speak for my client who holds a high position at Norfolk Naval Shipyard, whose position just isn't high enough to override her disrespect being displayed by her Caucasian employees who are almost twice her senior. She shares with me how she's ridiculed daily, and it would be no good to tell her supervisor whose skin is like theirs, because they will find a way to eliminate her out of her position before theirs. I speak on behalf of my active military clients, my African-American active military clients who are reprimanded for the same unnatural hair pigments that the Caucasian women are able to get away with. I speak for my Caucasian brunette client, who tells me how her own race makes her feel inferior for being able to relate to a black woman like myself. I recall one of the pastors at the Merging Differences Conference rally a few weeks ago saying, "Let's play fair." I second that. However, we really have to merge differences to do so. I also recall another pastor saying, "Do your job." I second that. I heard another pastor say, "Mind your business, Portsmouth is our business." We have a solution. Our solution is to teach the children empathy without, empathy through programs set up throughout the school system that will teach human economics.
Ms. Crekmur, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and we would like to leave our contact information, myself, Coleman Young, Jewel Gatlin, I'm sorry, Jewel Gatlin. You know, we really have to get to work on this, our leadership really have to lead.
And as I told Mr. Young, thank you for your leadership, I really appreciate what you're doing and your sincerity. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Ms. Jewel Gatlin.
Good evening, Mayor Wright and council. Imagine that I have in my hands two apples, one is red, one is green, visibly they are different. However, once you cut them open and you look inside, they're the same, they're both delicious, they're satisfying, nutritious and filling. So, in other words, on the outside, different, but they both hold equal value. As elected officials, leading by example is one of your responsibilities. This is done by interacting with your citizens and solving problems that plague your city. As examples, will you show your citizens that all people are valuable by the way you listen to them, speak to them, respond to their wants and needs, by treating them with respect at all times, regardless of their views? Just like those apples, your citizens are different on the outside, but as human beings, they share many similarities, and they are all to be valued. Remember, as examples, you are being watched. Be the leaders we know you can be. Be examples needed for change. We, members of Virginia's for Lovers, Not Races, are coming to you asking for three things, all of which are viable programs for change, inclusion, and celebration of diversity. One, an annual cultural fest held right here downtown Portsmouth. This will be the first in this area, including all of Hampton Roads. It's a festival that will include and showcase the diversity of Portsmouth, its citizens, by boosting revenue for the city. Second, a bi-yearly diversity exercise held for each grade level in Portsmouth Public School Systems. It's our hope that we take an active role in teaching our children that diversity isn't to be embraced and enjoyed, not feared and hated. Lastly, we're asking for your support. We are here for the citizens and the city of Portsmouth, but none of this can be accomplished without the support of council. These three-minute talks up here are real cute, but what you have in front of you is an organization comprised of individuals from different races, religions, and backgrounds dedicated to working to build that bridge of racial divide that has controlled this city for decades. Let me say it again, for decades. It did not just start, some of you are just waking up to it. So, I'm going to stand here and ask you, members of council, will you support our cause? Will you be the example? Will you show that Virginia is for lovers and not for races? Thank you.
Okay, then no further business, we adjourn, thank you and good night.